Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is the approval of the agenda. I'm going to move that we move Mr. Terry Gray up for a presentation. He wasn't on it, but I'm going to put him ahead of Mr. John DeLucia, and he's going to tell us about a motorcycle toy run. Does anyone have a problem with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Gray, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Town Manager, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to invite two of my cohorts up here with me if I could. My name's Terry Gray, and I'm co-director of the motorcycle toy run that was held in Dare County in September. In April 2016, a group of motorcyclists got together and decided that they want to put together a motorcycle toy run that would benefit the underprivileged children in Dare County. The inspiration for this effort was the famous Vertigo Toy Run. Vertigo had decided that they were going to help other organizations and in a different way. Guys with motorcycles and ladies with motorcycles liked to ride, so we decided we better put a toy run together. Group of volunteers were identified, and we had members from every area of Dare County. We had TJ Struthers from Southern Shores, Chris Decou was representative for Kitty Hawk who's with us tonight, Elizabeth Fuel was from Kill Devil Hills, Ron Wright was from Kill Devil Hills in Collington, I was from Knackshead, Clay Harris and Diane Gavetti from Hatteras Island, Shane Baum from Onechees, Sam Ballard, who was our treasurer, was from Manio along with Joshua Scarborough, Terry Grubbs, who's with us tonight, was Mans Harbor in Dare County mainland. And the first order of business was for us to identify two organizations that could administer the program that we wanted to have to ensure that all the underprivileged children of Dare County would benefit. We chose two programs, Toys for Tots and the Outer Banks Women's Club. I prepared a video that we had shot of the event, and I'm gonna try to, I'm not very good on computers, but I'm gonna try to get it to run a minute if you will. I think y'all will enjoy this. It's a short video. There we go.
Yeah, I think so.
Here we go. Might take it a minute to load. All right.
Headed down south to the land of the pines, I'm thumbing my way into North Carolina, staring up the road and pray to God I see headlights. I made it down the coast in seventeen hours, picking me a bouquet of darkwood flowers, and I'm hoping for Riley I can see my baby tonight. So rock me mama like a wagon wheel, rock me mama any way you feel. Hey mama, rock me. Rock me mama like the wind and the rain, rock me mama like a southbound train. Hey mama, rock me.
And I think that's gonna shut up, shut off by itself, huh?
Shut up.
Someone might be coming up, so.
Real bad. How about that? That might stop it. As you can see, we wound up in Kitty Hawk, and we, our destination was Longboards, and we had over a hundred motorcycles that participated in this event. It was a very huge success. On the day of the event, we were able to collect a little better than $3,000 in cash, and we collected also 1,500 in toys. At the conclusion of our event, we were able to present the Outer Banks Women's Club with a check for $7,500 to help underprivileged kids in Dare County. We also were able to present $2,000 worth of toys for Toys for Tots. And there's gonna be a lot of kids in Dare County that are gonna be smiling at Christmas. The reason we're here tonight, the town of Kitty Hawk played an important part in the success of this event. Not only did they help us with getting things set up over at our destination through the planning process with permits and so forth, we appreciate that, but your police chief did an outstanding job. He assisted with traffic control. With over a hundred motorcycles, we did not have a single incident or accident, and a lot of it was due to the fact of law enforcement in Dare County that all came together and helped us go from Mans Harbor all the way to Kitty Hawk. Chief Joel played an important part, and if I could ask you to come forward, we have a presentation we'd like to make to him.
Yes.
Chris Decou is gonna read this certificate, but now I'm gonna, I'm gonna add one thing. With this certificate comes one of our inaugural patches for motorcycle run, and what that means is you've got to buy a motorcycle and ride it.
All right, this is for you in the office. Garrett Johnson, thank you, your support and commitment to Dare County Motorcycle Tour Run by assisting with traffic control. I'm pleased to report with a hundred participating riders, our event with your assistance and coordination was incident-free and a huge success. Safety's always number one for anything. I was shown Dare County are more, are a most valuable resource than everyone is, and should be involved and supported them. Dare County's underprivileged children are the primary inspiration of the DCNTR. We're of strong opinion if we provide some relief for Christmas time, these children will experience a little more normal feeling of being like everyone else and feel more ease, which will let them concentrate on activities like education, sports, and everyday things children do. Chief, with your help, we were able to raise nearly $3,000 on the 24th that will be given to the Outer Banks Women's Club, be used in the Angel Gift Program. We were also, we were also able to collect toys valued approximately $15,000 to be distributed to Toys for Tots. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Dare County Motorcycle Tour Run, I want to offer our utmost respect and heartfelt thanks. You were essential to our successful outcome of the event. Your performance, commitment, and dedication served the children of Dare County everyone.
Thank you, Chris.
And we would like to present you with a card that has our CEO on it, for your personal work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank y'all very much. Thank you so much for your help, and you know, Chief, you were right from the beginning. You were driving on the spot and said, no problem, we'll be glad to help. He make, he make Kitty Hawk look good, I'm telling you. So we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for letting us come and make that presentation.
Not a problem.
We're gonna be back next year, and it's gonna be a little bit bigger, I think.
Anytime somebody says something good, we'll always let you come up. Thank you very much.
Have a great evening, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to the Police Department and the Planning Department. Everybody comes together to make it work, and it all makes us look good, and we just sit here. So, thank you. All right, John, now we're gonna get on to some flood prevention.
Good evening. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I hope everyone's doing well. I'm John DeLucia from the Albarn Associates, a professional engineer and also a citizen of Kitty Hawk. I'm just here to report what we've done over the last several years and what we have done recently with the emergency pumping stations. In 2010 to 2011, we began to look and developed in 2012 a stormwater management plan that I know that you're all familiar with. And since that time, we've installed three of these emergency pumping systems. Now, the emergency pumping systems are for emergencies. We don't have permanent pumps hooked up to them, but they're there for when we needed them. And after Matthew, we certainly needed them. I'm glad to say that the Bird Street system that had just been completed seven or eight days before the storm, and the Hawk Street system performed admirably. Takeaway, we had a problem with. Takeaway, we had a bad gasket. I have it in my truck. I was actually gonna bring it in and show it to you, that caused that system to start taking in air, and it would not pump. That system has been corrected since that time. The first three systems were estimated to cost at about $173,000. We were able to get those systems in for $153,000, about 12% under the estimate, which was a good thing. However, the last system that we put in, Bird Street, started to creep up a little bit, and it was actually 6% over the estimate. So I think that we're seeing our construction prices starting to rise, and our material prices starting to rise. As we completed the Bird Street, I had advised Willie and Andy and the mayor that the beach road was getting ready to be paved, that DOT was basically letting us cut the ready every time we put one of these pipes in, and that we had four more that we needed to get under the highway. You all at your last meeting had approved 70,000, I think, for that project. That project, including the repair of the takeaway damage or defect, brought us in at about 68,000, so we were under budget on all of that also. The fourth that you have to be completed, well, let me just report a couple of fun things about the project. We, of the completed, of the completed systems, the three of them, we're covering about 108 acres of the 262 acres in the study area. So we're not quite happy with it, but we're getting there. In the number of dwellings and properties that it's serving, we're serving 163 currently out of the 482 that we had identified for these areas. Completing the next four would serve 319 properties. To bring the total number of properties with a stormwater could be managed at about 482, just for your information. Our original estimate was $257,000 to complete these next four systems. That included Pong Street, Ben Street, Starfish. We decided the historic pumpout was probably not a good idea because we had no place to discharge, and looked at making the improvements to Lindbergh Avenue between Historic and Starfish, and that is in this estimate that these numbers that I'm giving today. Initially, we had estimated that at about $257,000. I think we probably, for inflation and looking at what things are starting to cost us, we probably got about 15% of that estimate, which would bring it up to 295,000. We have already spent 64,000 of that putting the pipes under the highway, putting the pipes under the beach road. That means us, we probably need to budget somewhere in the 230 to the $250,000 range to complete those four systems. Any questions?
Okay, that completes everything east of 158.
That completes all of the systems east of 158 that were in this plan. Just as was a sign, we have 8.2 acres, or 8.2 square miles of land in town. And during the evening, when Hurricane Matthew dumped 13 inches of water on us, that equates to about 1.8 billion gallons of water that fell in six hours. The ocean's front is about 3.6 square miles. That would equate to about 800,000 gallons of water, and in the individual basin areas, it was about 1 million gallons, or about 93 million gallons of water that fell in these basins. Just to give you an idea, that's far beyond the fact of how much rain we really saw during Hurricane Matthew.
And one of the more interesting facts is, that was, none of that was ocean overwashed.
No, that was none ocean.
That was, so what, what we're really saying here is, not only did we need it for ocean overwash, storm surge effects, but what we need it for is just regular rain events. So it's kind of a twofer in what we're trying to accomplish. Am I ready to ask Council if they're ready to hire you? Or do you have more?
I was just gonna touch the takeaway system again. We had, we had looked at potentially looking at takeaway and expanding it and enhancing it somewhat. I'm not sure exactly where that would go, but I think it should be investigated. I've run some rough numbers. We probably were in the range of about $165,000 of expansions that would pick up a little bit further north behind the lady, the handicap three doors down on the side. We have another basin that gets hot up in there that's not cooling down as quickly. And that would also be looking at maybe going closer to the highway with some infrastructure to pull that other area down. I did give you two different contracts. One of them was to complete the four systems that we already have pre-designed, and then a contract to maybe study and look at takeaway and see if we can't make that more effective and more.
And one of the things, and Council probably doesn't know this, but I do, that I want you and Legal and Andy to make sure, in whatever we do here, if we go on somebody's property like we did on takeaway, and you know, we, they give us permission to put in a sump, that we make them understand that that's not gonna pump them bone dry.
Yeah.
That, that we're, we're limited by dener in how much and how low we can pump, or even the physical attributes of it. So I would like for you folks, because we had that complaint, to make sure we get something in writing so they acknowledge what we can do versus what the outcome will be, all right? Make sure we do that.
And of the four of the plan, the only one I believe that has public or private property is the one that's owner-owned on the midians here by the house, because the low spot is actually back there.
Right.
So we'll make sure we advise them of that.
Okay.
And I've talked with them about the easement and their activism last year, spread on board again, including the town. And that's really all I have to report.
All right. Council, anybody have any questions? We know we need it. The ones we put in, we weren't sure how well they would work. Now we do. We have, I don't know about you folks, but I had some calls from other towns that were saying, how did you do that? And what does it take to get this water out of my town? We were prepared, and that felt really good. Are we ready to hire this man? If so, do I hear a motion to hire Don DeLucia to proceed with the engineering for both these projects? You in agreement we need to do that?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear a motion to do that?
Motion moved.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, John, get to work.
Thank you all very much. I hope you have a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe and prosperous New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
I called Rob, I guess about six weeks ago, whatever, during the mess going on. I had a call from a guy over on Gooseander, and they were asking where the documentation was that said what the water level had to be once the pumps were pulled, and what dener's level was. And I got him to fax me over a copy of it, and I gave it to that property owner. I think it might be a good idea if the property owners in those areas had a copy of that. So they know right off the bat that, you know, when it goes below that level, we're not gonna do anything. We can't. Is that possible?
That's a great idea. Yeah, the code there, the law that says that once it rises above or below the 13 inches, I believe, is the 14 inches.
14, yeah.
That, once it's below that, we're no longer able to pump the water. That, that might be, and it's really just for emergency vehicles. That's the only reason we're able to pump.
Right.
Legally.
Legally, right. So that is the only reason we're able to pump into the ocean, because we're discharging that in the ocean. So then you got the environmentalists, and that's, that's why they have that rule for the emergency vehicles. But that would be something good to kind of maybe send to those property owners so they have a better feel for it, and I'll get with the mayor and Willie will try to put something together and send it out. It's not a big expense.
Now, I do want you to follow up on something we talked about earlier, and that was going back to dener and saying, look, we have police cars that are a lot lower than 14 inches. They are emergency vehicles, and it would be, it would be better if we could get lower than 14 inches. So if you'll follow that up too.
Okay.
But I agree with you on the notice. That would be helpful. Get it off Willie's back a little bit, because they're the one, he's the ones catching the complaints. I agree. All right, anything else on this? All right, John.
We, actually, we had done some of what you had suggested early with Cal.
Okay.
And lo and behold, the answer that we got back for our permitting was, well, if it's drainage within your right of way, you're not required to have a permit for the improvements. So we were actually exempted from the, from the stand pipes themselves.
Yes, I understand that.
But we had started that process with a list of reasons why we should be allowed to pump lower, and justifications that they were actually starting to talk about. And then they found the clause, and they said, oh, you can just go do it. But you know, you still have to follow our guidelines of the 14 inches. So they never addressed that, but I think it's time to probably bring that back up on the table again.
Well, when that came up, I had asked the governor, the one we still have, but it won't have shortly, for help in, in drainage outfalls. And that's where we were going with that. And that's when they came back and said, no, no, you don't have to do that, but you can do the stand pipe system. So we went that way, and then on top of that, Beach Nursement came out, so it kind of, you know, that went away. What would we gain by?
But we had a document prepared that was a justification to pump lower than the 14 inches.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. All of that had been prepared and submitted, and then it just kind of got.
Well, yeah, the Beach Nursement came up, right.
We don't have to start from scratch again, I guess was what I'm saying.
Okay, Andy, there you go. You got something.
We'll meet up and get that taken care of.
Thanks, John.
Good.
All right, good. All right. Next is public comment. Anyone here signed up? Anyone here want to speak? Let the record show, no one came forward. Next is consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next we have public hearings. And I meant to ask the question, I don't think any of these require swearing in, do they?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure on that. All right, so we have a text amendment. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, which one of you want? You got it? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Rob?
All right, the first text amendment we have tonight is for an addition to Section 42-405 yards generally. If approved, it would add 42-504J. If you read, in instances where remodel or addition to a single-family home would result in an entry side yard setback, the outermost edge of uncovered porches and steps may encroach up to two feet into the required side yard setback. This provision does not apply to new construction. Currently, our side yard setbacks are kind of based on dwelling size. Up to 3,000 square feet, you have a 10-foot side yard setback, and then as the dwelling goes up from there, it starts to increase the side yard setback. Our ordinance with regards to the front yard setback currently has a similar exception as to what this would propose, allowing the uncovered steps and porches to encroach four feet into the front yard setback. Also, I would just point out that since this amendment, if approved, would not apply to new construction. It would just be for additions and remodels. Though, the minimum side yard setback we would ever see was still 10 feet. You look at the two feet encroaching off of, off of 10-foot setback. In the staff report, I laid out a brief example where this might come into play. If a home was originally constructed at 2,900 square feet and had 10-yard, or 10-foot side yard setbacks, and had a side access with uncovered steps that measured 11 feet from the property line, as it stands, it's currently compliant. You know, the stairway is out of that 10-foot setback. But if the homeowner decided to do an addition, either enclose the lower level or an addition elsewhere that bumped it over that 3,000 square foot threshold, it would then require a two and a half foot, or 12 and a half foot side yard setback. Then, at that point, those stairs are no longer meeting the requirement. So during the staff review, we either wouldn't be able to approve the addition because they'd be creating non-conformity, which we can't do, or we'd have to tell them they have to tear out the steps and lose that side access. The third option would be trying to seek variance from the Board of Adjustment, but one of the requirements for granting the variance is the hardship can't be self-created, and building the addition would create the hardship, so that wouldn't be really an option for the, for the applicant. As noted, the amendment would only apply to the outermost edges of uncovered porches and stairs, so it would not allow somebody to, if they were doing an addition, the addition itself could not extend into the side yard setback. It'd just be the stairways and decks. The Planning Board at its October 13th meeting, we answered the recommended approval for the proposed text amendment. The applicant is here. If there's any questions for him, or if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
All right. Council have any questions of Rob?
Yes, sir.
I do. Just one. The difference between a porch and a deck. A deck, for example, I know it'd be only two feet, but under this provision, could it go from one side of the house to the other, for example? A 35-foot wide, two-foot deck, as opposed to a porch, to me means, you know, a step out, steps down kind of a thing?
Right. I think it would be viewed, as long as it's uncovered, it would be viewed in the same, the same regard. It's, you know, essentially, you know, the deck's more for the sitting area, but the porch is kind of landing where you just access out to the steps. But I think from our standpoint and their view, we would look at it the same way, as long as it was uncovered.
And also, they wouldn't be, be able to put any steps if they did a two-foot deck on the side, right? Because then they would encroach more than the.
Right, unless it, you know, unless it ran.
No, they'd have to come out, and then that two-foot steps and deck or porch, whatever you want to call it, would be within the two-foot.
Right.
Boundary. Most of the problem around here, this occurs because of our flood elevation, where we have houses that are raised up, and we've had this problem come up before when people have asked to put a side steps, a set of steps, that a house that was built on ground wouldn't have. They could have a side access, and it wouldn't be a problem, would it?
Right, that's right.
As opposed to what we have here. All right, just a couple of comments. All right. Council, no questions here?
No questions.
All right. It's public comment. Anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? All right. Let the record show, no one came forward. Do I hear a motion to go back into regular session?
Senator.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We're back in regular session. Counsel, what do you want to do with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the proposed text amendment amending the subsection 42-405, adding subsection J, allowing encroachment of uncovered decks and stairs into the side yard setback in certain circumstances as described in the proposed text. The town council finds that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the adopted Kama land use plan and finds these amendments to be in the public interest.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further comment? Hearing no further comment, do I hear a motion to approve?
That was a motion.
I'm sorry. You did. I'm sorry. Pardon myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Hoping I won't have to read that again. No. I'm the one that's out the lunch here. All right. All right. Next thing we have is public hearing for a text amendment. This is kind of a big one. Do I hear a motion to go back into public hearing?
Senator.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Rob, we're in public hearing.
All right. This proposed text amendment deals with the town's policy on unlisted uses, those that are neither addressed either in permitted use by right or conditional use permits. The current language exists under 42-226, uses not specifically identified as permitted or conditional uses. And it reads, "Unless otherwise authorized by an amendment to this chapter, any use not specifically identified as permitted use or conditional use is not allowed." There's kind of two amendments that, that's being proposed with, with this one. The first part is this text is currently listed under the Kitty Hawk Woods zoning district, and it's only present in that location. It does, or does reference that, unless authorized by an amendment to this chapter covering all of chapter 42. But I think as a, from an organizational standpoint, anything dealing with this should probably be in the administration and enforcement section. The second part is kind of where we get to the, I guess, the meat of it. Recently, court findings in North Carolina have leaned away from that notion that unless the use is specifically listed as permitted, then it's prohibited. And as a result, some localities have created prohibited use tables where they try to go district by district, listing out every use that they don't want to see in that district. I'm kind of of the opinion that that is both a, kind of a burdensome way to go about it and inefficient because you're going to end up with a, you know, 20-page list of uses that you don't want, and you're still not going to think of every use that's out there that you don't want. And back to the, the court findings, the, the localities that do leave this blanket statement in saying that unless it's listed as per, or permitted, then it's prohibited. There've been, Casey might be able to help me out with the amount of court, or court cases that have come out recently, but a lot of those have been overturned and the courts are saying, "Well, you didn't say it's prohibited, so we're going to allow it even though, you know, it's, you've got this statement in there." So that was kind of what prompted me to, to start going into this. Doing some reading on the, on the subject, I came across the article from David Owens that's attached in the staff report where he referenced some language that the county carry uses. And that's what I proposed to put into our ordinance. And that has gone to court and held up because they, they found that the, unless the planning director was abusing their discretion, that the permissive rather than prohibitive statement or ordinance was more preferable. So the language, and I won't read through all of it here, it's kind of long. It essentially gives the planning director the ability to compare unlisted uses to the most similarly listed use that we have on the books already. In practice, staff kind of does that already anyways. This would kind of just put it on the books for us. As an example, if you think back a few months ago, we had the indoor bounce house conditional use permit. We don't have, you know, anywhere listed in the ordinance, the indoor bounce house or anything of that nature. But looking through that BC 1 district, I felt that it most similarly related to the game room, which is what it came forward as a conditional use permit and what got approved. So that's kind of how it's being done currently. This would just, you know, put some backing behind it and give us, it'd be less of a judgment call, it'd give me some specific things to look at when comparing it to the different uses. So that's kind of was the mindset on it. And I will add too that we may have or may think of some specific uses for different districts that we, you know you absolutely don't want and you don't want to leave it up to chance or judgment. There's nothing to stop us from going in and adding in a few prohibited uses per district to go in addition with this, just, like I said, in case there's something that we know we absolutely don't want and we don't want to leave it up to anybody's judgment call or criteria that they, we can just, we can address it straight out and say it's prohibited. The planning board at its October 13th meeting recommended, unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendments. And that, I will turn it over for questions.
All right. Counsel? Any questions for, Rob?
I just have one thing. When I was reviewing the, the, um, chapter 42, and you look at the index when you're looking at it online, all of the zoning areas are mentioned by name except Kitty Hawk Woods. And its title of its section is general. So if you're looking for Kitty Hawk Woods, you got to dig deeper than just the index. And that's the, that would be, that's section 42-225. Since we're in here doing something, can we please put Kitty Hawk Woods on that section title?
Because that wouldn't be a part of doing this, or would it?
Uh, it wouldn't necessarily relate to.
She needs a title so that we can go find the thing. That's what we're after here.
Right. It's at the beginning of the Kitty Hawk Wood. We have it, uh, when you get to the district regulations, there's article, I think it's article one, it's Kitty Hawk Woods, article two is Kitty Hawk Beach, article three is Kitty Hawk Village. Except article one, even though it deals with Kitty Hawk Woods, it's, it's titled Article One, General.
Yeah, it has no title.
Right.
So what do we need to do to put a title to it?
Um, can we make that change in this hearing?
I don't see why not. I mean, I'm not even sure that it qualifies necessarily as a text amendment.
Okay.
So I think we'd be okay, yeah, to just go ahead and make the motion, I think, to have that changed and keep it part of this.
As a part of this?
As a part of this. I don't see why not.
All right. You're going to have to make the motion because you're going to have to add it. But I got a question first.
Okay.
There are two things. One is just for general information. The reason this has really come up is because David Owens from the School of Government wrote an article that compiled all of these cases that have basically, the courts have said, "You can't do it that way." And from that, that prompted us, the town, to become involved and, and find a better way or a different way, so that we don't have a court case that we have to litigate and go through all of that. So that's what prompted all of this. The only other point I want to make on the record is that in the past, there have been occasions when the planning director did some things that council members didn't like. Now, this gives you some subjective oversight that we not, we're not going to know until after you've done the fact. So you, you need to be aware that as council members come and go and have their own opinions about how things should be done or what should be done, you may be faced with that. Now, there is a caveat in here that kind of gives it, if an amendment is needed to the text, then you can do that. But it might come too late to satisfy some. So you need to be careful in, in doing this, assuming we pass this, okay? I'm just letting you know what's happened in the past. All right. Has anybody signed up?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's because there's nobody here. Does anybody want to speak to this public hearing? Let the record show, no one came forward. All right. Counsel, do you have anything else before we go back into regular session? All right. All right. Do I hear a motion to go back in regular session?
Senator.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Counsel, Arlen, what do you want to do?
Do I need to make my, my, my heading change a separate?
Sure. As long as, as long as, uh.
I think that'd be just, if you want to do it separate, yep.
Automize it.
I move to adopt the proposed text amendment, adding subsection 42-41, unlisted uses, establishing set criteria for the planning director to determine whether unlisted uses are permitted per each zoning district. Town council finds that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the adopted Kama use plan and finds these amendments to be in the public interest. In addition, I would like to have the title of section 42-225 changed from general to Kitty Hawk Woods.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do you have your text amendment? Well, that went along. All right. Now we have new business. We have a request to hire a building inspector, and the only reason council is involved is because we have a hiring range that the manager can hire too, but anything above that requires council permission. And there's a reason we did that a long time ago. Andy, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. In accordance with section four of the personnel policy, all persons employed in positions approved in the position pay plan will be employed at a step in the grade that is no more than the third step within the grade. However, exceptionally well-qualified applicants may be employed above the third step with approval of the town council. The planning director, along with the permitting tech and Melody, our HR director, interviewed applicants. After the interviews, the recommendation was to hire Mr. David Lewis. Mr. Lewis is currently employed for the City of Elizabeth City, where he's been a building inspector for 22 years. He's, comes with good recommendations and references, and we feel like he would be a good fit for the department and the town. Basically, as the mayor mentioned, any, any hiring that we do above the step three in the pay grade has to come to council for approval. Just so the rest of the council understands, you know, when we do go into hiring somebody, we look at qualifications being number one when there are selections. And then we also try to hire within that range, obviously, in the, for the benefit of the, of the town. But in this particular situation, the, really the top four candidates, the exception of one, wanted at least this pay and some wanted more. So we looked at the other surrounding cities as well, the building inspectors in Duck, Dare County, Nag's Head, Kill Devil Hills, and they were all higher than what our recommendation is here tonight. So I think the second thing we look at is the market, what drives the market. And in this particular situation, I think building inspectors comes with, you know, certifications and schooling and qualifications that you have to be, to be a building inspector. So we definitely look at the market, and then we look at the budget. The current building official is paid more than this starting rate. And we look at all those things together, and then we kind of come up with a recommendation to council. So we know we have to work within our budget, and we also have to be able to entice the candidate to accept employment who meets the qualifications. So our recommendation tonight is to hire the building inspector at a pay grade 64, step 16, with a salary of 65, 205. Now, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, you have any questions? So out of the four, three of those wanted that same amount, one wanted more, correct?
Yeah, out of the four, one wanted less. He would accept less than the 65, but it was still above the pay grade, so we'd still be having this conversation tonight, the step three. But that candidate still had to continue with certifications in order to be qualified to be a building inspector. So I'd have to bring him on, and then he'd have to work underneath someone in order to go out and do inspections. The candidate we selected's got the 22 years of experience. He also has the Kama. And he would come in being able to go out and complete inspections as needed. Now, we did look into, in discussions with the mayor, we did call the county regarding kind of partnerships, because sometimes that does work. I actually, in my previous position, we actually went to another city to have, you know, to partner to do the inspections. They just didn't have the capacity in the building department for the county, and I believe one of the inspectors were retiring. And then on top of that, when I look at, we do an average between 30 and 40 inspections a month, and then our building inspector's also doing site plan reviews, which, about the major plan reviews, which are larger plans that you really have to sit down and look at. He does about 10 of those a month, and he also does our soil and erosion control. There's just a lot of things that he does, and we had people call today. There was a call today that was requesting our inspector to see if they could stop by in the morning so they could continue their project, you know, their, their permit, they can continue the construction of whoever's, whatever it was they were doing. So it, having an in-house building official does help. We, we would more than likely, you know, look at the county if that was something that we thought would work for us. But when we did call and ask, they didn't have the capacity to, to take us on. Maybe in the future, that would work out, or maybe possibility of us helping another city out and offsetting some of these costs. So, that being said, tonight, though, this, this was the option before us, and this was the candidate that was most qualified.
I make the motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the request to hire the building inspector above the pay range, hiring range.
Do I hear a second? Do you second, Lynn? All right. I, I will comment. I did pressure the manager to go to the county. We had talked, oh, a year or more ago, about possibly tagging with the county. Southern Shores did that. But what's happening to us right now is the county is, does have one about to retire, building is up, and they're stacked, and they just couldn't do it. So this is the other option. And the fact that, well, it is what it is. So there you go. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Bring him on. All right. And the next thing is a recommendation to put some money on the principal balance of the firehouse, get that debt off the town if we can. Andy, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 30th, 2016, we had an audit presentation from our auditor, and she noted a unrestricted fund balance of 2.6 million. This is in addition to the 3.5 million emergency reserves that we have. As everyone knows, we're an oceanfront community, and from the last storms and things, a lot of times, you need those large reserves in order to help offset the costs from some disasters that may occur. So that's helped us to have a, a good, and the council's done good financially for the town, has put the town on a strong financial footing. So this request is requesting to take some of that unrestricted fund balance and apply it to the fire department, the debt on the fire department. Currently, that's besides beach nourishment, that's the only debt that the council has is on that fire station. The current balance on the fire station is 1.8 million. So this half a million dollar payment from unrestricted fund balance would bring the principal down to 1.3 million. And the annual payments would be reduced from 281,000 to 179,000. So we're not, you know, we still have to keep the term of the loan. The term goes out until 2018, so we'll still be paying on, I'm sorry, 2,000, I have the loan here. Let you know. 2,000. thousand, I have the loan here, let you know, two thousand... Anyways, the term of the loan will stay the same.
It's eight, it's eight more years.
Eight more years, yes. We still have eight more years, so the principal payments would be reduced. The town would save close to thirty-two thousand dollars on the interest, so it's a, that's another way to save some money. And in addition, right now, interest rates, as the mayor asked me, you know, are, we're getting point zero three percent at the bank, we're paying three percent on the loan, so if we've got money, let's, and pay off the debt service, save three percent, that's like making three percent on your money versus letting it sit in the bank. So it's just a good overall situation, and then also the principal will be paid down, be that much more tangible to be paid off. But the term, we're not sure, you know, we're still going to pay off the the next eight years, but the payments will be reduced. We may come back before you have a later date and have enough to go ahead and satisfy the entire loan. But for now, it's, the the request is to pay half a million dollars on the fire station.
Okay, and and one of the reasons, well, a big reason we can do this is our instructions as council was, we want to be conservative, we want to make sure we have enough money to meet disasters and things of that nature. And the way that's done is basically, the manager basically budgets conservatively, but in addition to that, staff actually looks for ways to mind your money, and that's an important component. It's not just a matter of budgeting. If the staff doesn't mind their budget, get grants where they can, and it's my understanding, our town goes after grants harder than most. They take the time to do it. So we're able to do these kinds of things, pay this thing down, save some money, and we'll also be able to do some infrastructure things. The piping system that we'll be doing out on the beach, we'll be able to pay for that and get that done, so the next disaster, we're even better shaped than we are today. And that's the way this council has been looking, and the way the staff has been responding, and the town, the citizens of the town need to be at least proud of the staff, for sure. All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
I got to ask a question first, and I appreciate what the staff's done. I mean, excellent. Would it not be also to our advantage to can, continue to make the same payments we're making now, instead of dropping the payments back to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand to continue?
Oh, sure.
Continuing to make the payment of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and to a prepayment?
Yeah, he can put that, keep that in the budget, as long as we can make that payment, then it'll bring that principal down every year.
I think that would be a good thing to do.
That's fine. Yeah, that's...
We work out in the budget.
What's that? It's already in the budget, so yeah, that, yeah, like you said, this year, we could continue just to make the same payments, if that's the direction of council, we'll just keep the same payments that are there.
Y'all, y'all agree with me?
Yes, sir. I'm ready to get it down.
Yeah, I'm too. But I thought, I appreciate what you guys do.
That's a good, good point. I didn't even, you know.
All right. Everybody, I don't think we need a motion. We just tell the man to do it. All agreed?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Just like the Nike commercial, just do it.
Get that thing paid down. All right. Manager, do you have any general comments?
Just a couple of general announcements. The fire department will be having Santa Claus at the fire station on December tenth from six to eight P M. I hear it's a, a great time for the kids, and there's a great Santa Claus that comes to the fire station, so you can go take your Christmas pictures there. Also, I was notified that this app, this evening, from our public works director, that six thousand yards of debris has been removed, cubic yards of debris has been removed from the town, and approximately thirty-eight tons of C and D, so majority or almost all, I believe, ninety-nine percent at least, were completed with the debris removal. So that's good news. Willie on, our finance director, met with the FEMA specialist for the reimbursement side of things, so we'll be compiling all those numbers in January, we'll bring those back for council. We should have a good idea of what was expended for Hurricane Matthew, and then we'll be requesting reimbursement for that. With that being said, I hope everybody has a great Christmas, and I think I'd have been here a year. Last year was when I moved here, Christmas. I'm actually settled in for one Christmas, so that's good. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, and Willie, I know you've been working overtime on trying to get that trash picked up and stuff. I was coming in from doing some striper fishing, coming up Mingos Cut, and I saw you down there looking in your truck, so, and that was Sunday, so he's out all the time.
And then, one more thing, Mayor, if I could, also, in that same regards, you know, Willie's, we work with the other towns a lot, and Nag's Head loaned us their grapple truck for the last several weeks. That's, that's helped to get the debris removed quicker, so we appreciate the town of Nag's Head, and and it just shows that we do work with other communities as much as possible.
All right. Mr. Town Attorney?
Just going to ask the town manager, what was the date of, I mean, the date of that Santee clause again? What's the date again?
December tenth.
Got you.
Six to eight P M.
I got the time, I just missed the date.
We'll make sure you're last in line.
I, I said, nothing from you, man.
Nothing from you?
Nothing.
All right. Didn't you have one more person step up to?
Oh, well, yeah, we did. I can announce that. So we were down, we were down to five, and now we've had somebody else step in from the beach nourishment easements, and they voluntarily relinquished, or rephrase, they've signed an easement voluntarily, is what they've done, and everyone we get in, it's just less cost. I mean, and it's makes the process far more simple as well. I mean, and they're, they're signing something that that's perpetual, and and it does make, from a, from a cost standpoint, it becomes a lot more efficient, but also just, just a more, more simple process all around, just getting us closer to getting the sand on the beach.
That's, yeah, it's, won't be long, that's true. All right, well, so we're down to four.
We're down to four, yes.
All right. And only one of those right now has given any kind of problem?
The only one. Only one.
That's good to hear. All right, town council, Jeff, you got anything for us?
I'd just like to just thank Mr. Gray again for, and the town for working so well with him to raise so much money and and gifts for the county, and I just want to thank all of his riders and everybody that participated.
Um, again, Kitty Hawk, staff, everybody that works for Kitty Hawk, you're awesome. It's wonderful to hear good things about the the people that work for the town. It makes my job a whole lot easier, and I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Christmas, New Year's, and sad, but we won't see each other till next year.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for participation in the marathon, as well as cleaning up afterwards, and the police work, the, what the police did, the fire people, whole town staff was great, and it made it a, a complete success. We were happy about that. Have, has anybody checked? We discussed a few months ago about researching whether the ditches could be cleaned out. I think some of...
I got my list here.
It's on his list. Anyway, just sometime in the future.
Oh.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. Here we go.
The county is working on a grant to have all the ditches and canals cleaned.
Even in municipalities?
Yes.
Wow.
It's a, it's actually a FEMA grant, and formerly Wonderly, I can't remember her married name now, used to work at Coastal Reserve. She is now the Dare County representative for water quality, and she is working on it. And I have been sending her pictures when I find places that have stuff clogged up, so she is working on that.
Okay, that's good news. I'm glad to hear that. I, I've been on Andy a couple of times.
Yeah, I reached out to her about a month and a half ago, and...
All right, that's, that's good news. I'm glad, I hope that works, because that'd save us money too.
Definitely.
All right.
I agree with staff. This is our last meeting for two thousand and sixteen. Our wonderful town staff, you guys and ladies are great. You're just wonderful. It's an honor to sit up here on this council and work with all of you, and I really mean that. Merry Christmas to all of you.
All right, well, I know you folks have said it all, but I agree with it, and I do hope everybody has a good Christmas and a better New Year, and we've got an interesting year coming up after this twenty sixteen election, that's for sure, so stand by. Public comment? Anyone here that wants to speak? Let the record show, no one came forward. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening. Thank you.